Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evan School District 6. Almost the 13th day of September 2021, this meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for District States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Papas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Five members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, we are back, and have been back for about four weeks now. And unfortunately, we're still dealing with COVID-19 this year. But this year has, it's been a better start at least than than last year. And we know we got off to a difficult start with two weeks, two weeks in. The Delta variant began to surge in Greeley. And guys, we understand that there is a national debate around masks and how effective they are with respect to the Delta variant. But whatever else you believe about masks and their effectiveness, they are one tool, the one tool. The Health Department has given us that allows us to keep kids in school. When we instituted a mask mandate for pre-K through 8th grade just two weeks ago, we had 742 kids in quarantine. And today, that number, we are proud to say, is around 89. And so, this has allowed us to keep kids in school. Again, for our elementary kids, it's the one tool that we have that keeps them in school. And so, we're glad that kids are back in school. And we are also back in school. And so, as a Board, we've been able, for the first time in a while, to get back into schools. And we were able to get to Centennial Elementary. And thanks to the staff of Centennial for allowing us to visit and see what's happening in their school, it's incredible. We also were able to get to visit the Twinton Academy of Pre-Engineering last week. And that is something else we're very proud of because it's the first time in about 20 years that we are building a school that's not a replacement school. We've added thousands of kids to this district in the last 20, 20 years, but we have not been able to build any schools. This school is, as far as I'm aware, on time and on budget. And we are expecting to open the Twinton Academy of Pre-Engineering in the fall of 2022. Another thing that we are, we are absolutely
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. On this, the 13th day of September 2021, this meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Ms. Papas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally? Five members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, we are back and have been back for about four weeks now. And unfortunately, we're still dealing with COVID-19 this year. But this year has, it's been a better start at least than than last year. And we know we got off to a difficult start with two weeks, two weeks in. The Delta variant began to surge in Greeley. And guys, we understand that there's a national debate around masks and how effective they are with respect to the Delta variant. But whatever else you believe about mask and their effectiveness, they are one tool, the one tool. The Health Department has given us, that allows us to keep kids in school. When we instituted a mask mandate for pre-K through 8th grade just two weeks ago, we had 742 kids in quarantine. And today, that number, we are proud to say, is around 89. And so, this has allowed us to keep kids in school. Again, for our elementary kids, it's the, it's the one tool that we have that keeps them in school. And so, we're glad that kids are back in school. And we, we are also back in school. And so, as a, as a board, we've been able, for the first time in a while, to get back into schools. And we were able to get to Centennial Elementary. And thanks to the staff of Centennial for allowing us to visit and see what's happening in their school. It's incredible. We also were able to get to visit the Twinton Academy of Pre-Engineering last week. And that is something else we're very proud of because it's the first time in about 20 years that we are building a school that's not a replacement school. We've added thousands of kids to this district in the last 20, 20 years, but we have not been able to build any schools. This school is, as far as I'm aware, on time and on budget. And we are expecting to open the Twinton Academy, Academy of Pre-Engineering in the fall of 2022. Another thing that we are, we are absolutely proud of is the number of AP Scholars that have been recognized in our district. I just want to go through this for you. Greeley Central led District 6 with 29 AP Scholars. Greeley West and Northridge High Schools had 19 AP Scholars. Frontier Academy had 13 AP Scholars. University had eight AP Scholars. And Union Colony Preparatory had two AP Scholars. And if you, if you look down, you'll see that some of those, when you, when you look at the press release, that is, and look down at that, you'll see that some of those had, were AP Scholars with distinction or AP Scholars with honors. And what that means is that those kids have, have four or five. And we have some kids with as many as 10 and 12 and 14 AP classes under their belts. And what that effectively amounts to is a semester of college that they don't have to take. Or if you have 12, say, AP classes, that's about three semesters of college that you, that parents don't have to pay for. And so, not only are we proud of those students, it is something that we are doing and want to continue to do to, to not only get kids ready for college, but make it affordable for them to, to attend. There are two of those AP Scholars I want to recognize. And that is Abigail Weaver of Northridge and Gianna Wamira of Greeley Central. They received AP Capstone diplomas for their scores of three or better in AP Seminar and AP Research Courses and four other AP Exams. Another way that we are helping send kids to college, and not, not we, but one of our nonprofits that, that assist us, the Greeley Dream Team, had a breakfast recently that we were able to attend. And that, and that breakfast, they recognized students. And they have been working to, to get kids who, who might not otherwise be able to, to know that they, they could go to college, to know the process and how to apply for college. They've been working to get kids to college for, for around 20 years as well. And so, we're very thankful for the Greeley Dream Team and for all of their work in District 6. Those are all the announcements that, that I have, I think, tonight. We are to our public participation regarding agenda items. And normally, we would, we save things that are not on the agenda for, for the very end of the meeting. But we know that a number of you are here to speak. And so, we want to let everyone speak right now so that you don't have to, you don't have to sit through the entire meeting if, if you don't want to. There are a few housekeeping rules I just need to remind you of. The Board welcomes the comments of our community members and has decided this portion of the agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments or pose questions to the Board related to items that are listed on tonight's agenda. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our Board Secretary. That's Ms. Christina Crane. Not to individual Board members. The Board typically does not engage in discussion or provide immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. The Board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of our school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they signed up to speak. And comments are limited to two minutes. If more than one person wishes to speak on the same topic, please focus comments on providing only new information and not repeating the views of already expressed, already expressed by other speakers. Thank you in advance for your participation. We appreciate how respectful our, our participants have been over the last few weeks. We know that, again, that this is, this is a debate with people on both sides. And there are a lot of emotions on, on both sides. And we, we really do appreciate how respectful and courteous everyone has been in that process. And so, we'll, we expect everyone to, to remain so tonight. So with that said, our first speaker tonight is Mr. Wiley Dickinson. He's a student and newly, he's here to speak on the newly stated mask mandate opposed to Weld County School District 6 public schools. Wiley, you will have two, two minutes, okay? And then we'll cut you off at two. Thank you, sir.
Um, I'd just like to start by introducing myself. I'm Wiley Dickinson. I'm a senior at Northridge High. And honestly?
Would you please grab the mic and speak into the microphone?
Do you want me to bring it closer? Would that help? Okay. My name is Wiley Dickinson. I'm a senior at Northridge High. And I'd like to say...
Turn on the mic!
The mic's wrong. Okay. Excuse me. Um, I'd like to say... Like, how, is that good there? Okay.
There you go.
I'd like to say that my name is Wiley Dickinson. I'm a senior at Northridge High. And honestly, I've been persecuted because of my beliefs. There was that Tuesday morning that I showed up to school and I had multiple teachers and administrators surround me because I elected to not wear a mask inside of the building. I caused no trouble. I went about my day as normal. And I, I showed it to my classes. I didn't try to get students to gather around me. I didn't try to make a scene out of anything. I just wanted to go to class. And they kept me from doing so. I didn't see an issue with what I was doing. I didn't see how I would be disrupting class in any way. And they, they refused to let me pursue my education any further that day. And it's honestly, it's sickening. It's happened many times before. I've had the same teachers. They have harassed students at that school because of their beliefs. I've seen it plenty of times. It's not just been me. It hasn't just been this school year either. I have, I've known people that have been going there longer than I have. And even before I even went to Northridge. And they were still harassed by the very same teachers that are there. And it's disgusting. It's appalling. I'm, it's, I don't know how else to say it because I'm just a student. I just want to go there and learn. And people have actively prevented me from doing so. I was even threatened to be arrested for what I did. They tried to call it disruption of education, which I'm no, I'm no expert on law, but apparently that's a criminal charge. That, that is what I was told by the Assistant Director of Security, Mr. Brown, who I believe is outside of those doors right now. You can ask him yourself. Everything's on video. And I saw him, just look at me. He heard what I said. And I believe he needs to know what I say. I know exactly. I remember everything that he said. I just wanted to go to class. And he threatened to have me arrested, a minor. Nobody even called my parents. There was no discussion of that. I just showed up to class and they refused my education. And I want change from all of you. You are board of the school. You should be in charge of this. It's disgusting.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Grant, Stephen Grant, resident of District 6. Special meeting, I'm here to speak on special meeting from September 13th, 2021. Mr. Grant? You have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, President, Board. My name is Stephen Grant. I pastor Destiny Christian Center here. I am a District 6 resident. And as such, I want to point out an attachment that I sent to Ms. Crane for all of you. It is Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which you should have. And it is Title VI in Religion. According to sincerely held Christian beliefs, masks represent deception, submission, and tyranny in the Bible. And there are many that adhere to this. And so, if they do have a sincerely held religious belief and carry that into the school as a public free exercise of their faith, they are to be allowed to do so. Right now, we do not have a pandemic. We have a casemec. Not only that, we have 60% of the people that are hospitalized that are actually vaccinated. There are implications for what District 6 is doing right now with the vaccine buses and the clinics. And you need to be aware of that. If you deprive any person by your ruling, your unanimous ruling on the 13th of September, from their sincerely held religious belief as they walk into that school, you could be both personally liable as well as civilly liable under Title 18, Section 242, which says that if you deprive anybody of their rights under the color of law as you act in your capacity, you are liable to be sued or jailed personally as well as in your capacity. I would urge you to recant your decision on masks and allow the Christian virtue of liberty to reign instead of what you are doing right now. This is wrong. This is unbiblical. And it is against people's religious beliefs.
Our next speaker is Ms. Jerry Pike, resident of District 6. I'm here to speak on general information. Ms. Pike, you'll have two minutes.
I'm going to apologize in advance. This is probably going to be the most emotional testimony that I've ever given in my entire life anywhere I've been. I've heard for many years that people can disagree with people and still have respect for them. I've never really been quite able to figure out how that works until two meetings ago when this crowd was here and I was here and I spoke before this board. I emailed Ms. Solis the very, that very night. And I thanked her for the way she respected the parents that were here that night. I never thought I would ever say, I've never, I probably have agreed with Councilwoman Solis and Councilwoman Papas on philosophical beliefs, never. I mean, we're completely on opposite sides of the political spectrum. But that night, those two women showed more respect for the people in this room than anybody sitting up there. Where I'm going to get emotional is Mr. Haley. I have known you for more than 20 years. You were a mentor for my son as he was growing up. We talked baseball. We talked education. We talked fishing. I voted for you every single time you ran for this position. And you sat up there, not one meeting, but two meetings. And you called me and everybody else that spoke before this board narcissistic and selfish. I don't care that you wear a mask. I ask that you don't care that I don't wear a mask. And in the very least, in your capacity as an elected official, that you respect your constituents when they come up here and they disagree with you. You don't have to agree with anybody in this room. And you can continue to disagree with the rest of us. But for you to sit up there and call me narcissistic and call everybody else selfish was unprofessional, unacceptable. And I have lost literally almost all my respect for you. And that is the hardest thing that I've ever had to say. But I really hope you consider your actions of those two meetings.
Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Sullivan, resident of District 6, parent of a student enrolled in District 6. Here to present on general, general information. Mr. Sullivan? Guys, if I could ask you not, not to cheer and boo based on, on what you hear.
It is called freedom. And they're right. They have a right to do that. Anyway, my name is Brian Sullivan and I am a parent of two kids in District, as you said. Go to Frontier. I believe your decision to mask my kids is unacceptable and lawful, unconstitutional, and without any science behind your decisions. If, I would like to read you something out of the FDA concerning surgical masks that some of you are wearing right now. Mask, mask covers the nose and mouth but provides physical barrier to the fluids and particulate matter. Surgical masks are intended for medical purposes and considered medical devices. While surgical masks may affect, may be effective in blocking splashes of large particle droplets, they do not provide protection from germs and other contaminants because of the fit between the devices and your face. In, in other words, the mask you are forcing my kids to wear don't provide the level of safety that you would so shamelessly love to have the public believe. These are medical devices and you are required to obtain medical consent, in which I did not give. The consent cannot be obtained through coercion, undue influence, punishment, or reward. You, as a school board, have done all four of these. So I believe your reckless, self-serving, arrogant, and intentional misinformation serves only three purposes. One being money. Two being control of the public. And three, to have influence to further your communist agenda with the schools. And yes, you should listen to everybody else regardless if it's, if it's a repeat of whatever anybody said or not. It's a public hearing.
Our next speaker is Ms. Angelica Weiss, resident of Greeley District 6, here to speak on Northridge Mask Mandate. Ms. Weiss, you have two minutes.
I have lived in three socialist countries before I moved to America and became a citizen here. Maybe that's why I cherish our freedoms more than some of you. Like Mr. Haley said, he was born here and will die here. Maybe moving to another country would open up your eyes to the freedoms we have here. That's the only explanation I have come up with why someone would call, another American would call another American selfish and narcissistic for standing up for our rights and freedoms. If you had to take a citizenship test like I did, I think all of you would fail. We are being conditioned to view our freedoms as selfish. What's really selfish is expecting us to render our liberties so you can all have a false sense of security. I'm sorry Mr. Tally's not here because I saw him at the RE4 meeting without a mask on laughing with other administrators from that district about joking, while they were joking about masking our children and forcing vaccines. When a parent talked about how her child was negatively physically and mentally affected by wearing a mask, when she called that child abuse, he laughed out loud. And I saw it with my own eyes. You think child abuse is funny? You are all setting our children on fire to keep a few scared, uninformed adults warm. There is nothing funny about that. In our last meeting, Mr. Tally actually regurgitated a statement made by a RE Board member about how it's unfair that this decision is put on you. It's you, the board. Instead of copying someone whining about how something isn't fair, why not be a leader? Pass this decision on to higher ups. Do you know who that is? It's us, the parents. At no time in history have people, the people who are forcing others into compliance been the good guys. Think on that.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Our next speaker is Ms. Emily Harmon, resident of District 6, here to speak on the Northridge Mask Mandate.
Today, I'd like to stress the concept of personal risk assessment and freedom. Masks could be a choice up to the students and parents. This virus is comparable to the flu. I don't care about how many cases there are if deaths are arising. I may see the need for more preventative measures. But right now, for school-aged children, we aren't dying on a large scale. When I see children get COVID, I don't tend to care. It's building our immunity. When I got COVID, I ate chickfully the whole time and watched TV shows. I tend to think it's a better thing if children got COVID because now they'll have immunity for a while. I think this will play out as more of a seasonal virus with cases spiking in the fall and winter while we are reminded to practice good hygiene like hand washing and covering coughs and sneezes. I've done my own personal risk assessment as a 17-year-old schoolgirl with no pre-existing conditions or serious, or serious conditions that will pit me at more risk of dying or getting seriously sick from COVID-19. Everyone high school age has the opportunity to get the vaccine because we are all over the age of 12. The age groups who are more likely to get the vaccine are people aged 25 and up for good reason. They are at more risk of COVID for being more serious for them compared to the younger population. My age group has only had 454 deaths from COVID out of the 1,976,350 cases confirmed for children, sources CDC as of last week. And we can assume that most of these children who have had pre-existing, most of these children who have died have had pre-existing or other serious conditions that led them to be at a higher risk. If someone does not want the vaccine, they must accept that they may be at more risk of getting COVID and the minuscule chance that they may die from it. And since every one of high school age and above has the opportunity to get the vaccine, masks should not be mandated to protect the unvaccinated population. It's called personal risk assessment. Also, I'll leave you from a quote from my fifth, from my 60-year-old sister. Masks are lame, though. Who even wears them anymore? You can't even breathe in them.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Speaker is Ms. Candace Sawyer, parent of a student enrolled in District 6, here to speak on current events.
I attended your last board meeting where you allowed the public not to speak. And during that time, Ms. Pepper Miller stated that people die. People do die. They die of everything, every day. Cancer, car accidents, you name it, suicide. In fact, kids die more of suicide than they do COVID. Anyway, with that, I just wanted to give you guys some WeldCounty.gov stats. Just note that in 2019, the population for, for the stats that are being used was 324,492. Our current population is 3,443 and 846. Our current population is 3,443 and 846. That is a 19,354,000-person difference. There are more people in this county than there were in 2019. Therefore, these numbers are inflated based off the difference and should be lowered. Greeley's current population, along with Evans, is 132,604 people. Deaths from March 15th to 2020 to 12/27 of 2020 in Weld County, where the underlying death was COVID, 259 people. Deaths from 1/3 of 2021 to 9/10 of 2021, which was this Friday, 60 people have died. The underlying issue was COVID. In an 18-month total, that's 319 people. There have been zero deaths in this month of September. This is all from weld.gov. Zero deaths in 0- to 19-year-olds has not occurred since this pandemic began 18 months ago. Zero. Zero deaths in all age groups directly related to COVID. Zero directly related to COVID. They are all underlying issues of COVID. Therefore, these people are dying from something else. There's 106 current hospitalizations since 3/16 of 2020 for students, or not students, I'm sorry, 0- to 19. None of those children, again, have died. September 2nd, the total of 6,977 from 0- to 19-years-old is 8.1% of the population.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer. Our next speaker is Mr. Chris Mercado, resident of District Six and parent of a student enrolled in District Six, here to speak on mass mandate, civil liberties, and rights. Mr. Mercado, you have two minutes.
I'd like to start by saying, how dare you? How dare you decide what is best for our kids? Our kids that we raised from the time they were an infant, like my little girl over there, to the time my oldest is 20-years-old making decisions on her own. I provided that life for her. I made decisions for her. Who gives you guys the right to tell me that my kid has to wear a mask because you say so? You are not the boss. You do not make the rules. You are no better than me. I am a lowlife, on the streets, working and hustling every day, looking at my kids, wondering how I'm gonna make it and how I'm gonna provide for them. And then you guys wanna throw in other elements to the surprise that make people have to make decisions on whether or not they even wanna go to work because they have to mandate the masks. Masks don't help. It's not about the masks. It's not about the vaccine. You guys wanna make it about the vaccines. You guys are all liars. All it comes down to is our choices, our people's choices. Each individual has that choice. We make choices. We don't allow you to dictate our choices. We are not children. We are an American people. We are a united people. We are small, tiny communities that make up bigger communities that create the United States. And through the United States, we create the world. We are humans everywhere. You won't let someone speak here because he's not in our district. This gentleman in the back of the room, he doesn't live here, so his voice doesn't count. But yet, he's an American. Why are our choices being dictated? Why are we sitting here and allowing you to make our lives what we want them? We are in charge. It is our destiny. It is our want. You don't like to be told what to do, neither do we. We are not gonna sit here and listen to it. We are a people who are united.
Thank you, Ms. Mercado. Our next speaker is Ms. Rebecca De La, parent of a student enrolled in District Six, here to speak on current events. Ms. Dare?
Who?
Ms. Dare?
Ms. Dare?
Ms. Dare, you'll have two minutes.
It is the policy of the Board of Education that this school district complies with the Child Protection Act. Your own District Six policies provided a legal reference on the Greeley School website, citing CRS 19-1-103, defining child abuse as "any case in which a child is subjected to emotional abuse." Emotional abuse means an identifiable and substantial impairment or risk of the child's intellectual or psychological functioning. Acts considered child abuse under CRS 18-6-401 include, but are not limited to, causing an injury to the child's life or the health of a child, including emotional abuse, permitting a child to be unreasonably placed in a situation that poses a threat of injury to the child's life or health. Dr. Blaylock noted psychological effects of wearing a mask are activation of flight or flight, chronic stress condition, fear, mood disturbance, insomnia, fatigue, compromised cognitive performance, depression, and anxiety. Dr. Marguerite Brison, a neurophysiologist with a PhD in pharmacology with a special interest in neurotoxicology, environmental medicine, neural regeneration, and neuroplasticity, this is what she has to say about masks and their effects on our brains. Quote, "For children and adolescents, masks are an absolute no-no. To deprive a child or an adolescent's brain from oxygen or to restrict it in any way is not only dangerous to their health, it's absolutely criminal. Oxygen deficiency inhibits the development of the brain, and the damage that takes place cannot be reversed. The child needs the brain to learn, and the brain needs oxygen to function. Purposely induced oxygen deficiency is an absolutely deliberate health hazard and an absolute medical contradiction," end quote. In a recent analysis of a mask sent to a lab worn by kids, 11 dangerous pathogens were found on them that caused illnesses such as pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, Lyme disease, diphtheria. Knowing this information, are you still willing to accept liability? I bet you're not, and that's why your legal counsel decided to decline to sign the notice of liability.
Our next speaker is Ms. Bobby Shilling, parent of a student enrolled in District Six, here to speak on health protocols. Ms. Shilling?
Hello, board members. Mrs. Pilch, I wanted to touch on what Rebecca said about child abuse. As my daughter witnessed, and I witnessed, and she dealt with child abuse within your district, I think you might wanna be aware of. Prior to the district mandate that was put into place by Montford, in place, district-wide, Montford Elementary had placed a school-wide mandate. Due to the continued research, which you just heard, of all the medical professionals out there, and the mounting evidence that germs and viruses are found on these things just within a short time of wearing them, we informed Montford that my daughter would not be wearing a mask during school. The school did not allow her on that, the school did allow her on that one day to go without a mask. However, so much damage to these children mentally and emotionally was witnessed by my daughter and heard from by myself. It began with complete segregation from the entire class and the entire lunchroom during lunch and recess. She was completely isolated, away from all the other students. Even though she's a tough little girl, it really hurt her to be treated that way by the staff members, and as if she had the plague, even though she was perfectly healthy. But it gets worse. During her entire day, she was told by other classmates, "Enjoy dying, Bree. If you don't wear a mask, you will die." These children have been completely and utterly brainwashed into the irrational beliefs put up by all of you, and it trickles down to them. Why would you instill such fear in small, easily influenced minds that have no statistical reason to live this way? For the pastor among us, I would like for you to remember that in the Bible, it speaks significantly on fear. One of my favorite verses is, and one I instill in my children, is 2 Timothy 1:7, "For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and self-control. Quit placing fear upon our youth." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Penana Templeton, resident of District Six, parent of a student enrolled in District Six, here to speak on mass mandate at District Six.
When I was in school, from elementary all through high school, teachers, staff, administrators, and parents would constantly ask the same question. If everyone jumped off a cliff, would you jump off too? You were expected to use your own brain. You were expected to research and learn both sides of an issue and make an informed choice. Sadly, this no longer applies. Our kids are not only encouraged, but required to comply. That is not education. This mandate is not about health. If health were the concern, this mandate would look very different. If this was about health, district staff and students would be trained in the proper use and wearing of PPE, Personal Protective Equipment. No one would be wearing homemade cloth or disposable masks that say "not effective for COVID" right on the label. Teachers would not be taking their masks off to chat with others or talk on the phone. If this was about health, the kids sharing vapes in the bathrooms, making out in the hallways, or going to lunch with friends and doing who-knows-what would be addressed. But it is not. If this was about health, you would consider the mental and emotional toll that these children are paying for your decisions. So I say again, this is not about health or safety. Because of this ineffective mandate, my honor roll student has been denied over a full week of school because you have decided that compliance is more important than education. Dropping out of school has now become a regular topic of discussion in our home. It is your job to provide education. It is not your job to provide or enforce medical care.
Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Kinsley, parent of a student enrolled in District Six, member of District Six staff, here to speak on COVID fears and climate.
There's a lot that I wanna talk about, but I'm not gonna do it today. There's a couple that, I am really concerned, but there's a couple people that spoke about, well, the pastor. 365, does that number mean anything to you? That's how many times "be not afraid" is in the Bible. 365. One, be not afraid, fear not, for every day of the year. And we push fear. We're pushing fear, and it's preached, week after week, on Sundays, faith, faith in God, faith in God, and that's on Sundays. And then Monday through Saturday, it's faith in bureaucrats. What I don't understand here is, from the very beginning of this, there has been nothing but fear pushed amongst the staff. I sit in the meetings, I know. There has not been one single stat that says that people 0- to 19-years-of-age, zero have died in Weld County. Where is that? Where are those stats that put people at ease? Why are we doing this? I'm gonna tell you through all the stuff that I see in the schools, and there's too much to talk about now, so I'm not going to. But not just fear, but anti-Americanism is being preached. We stood here and pledged allegiance to the flag, and I love that. That is the flag that for 23 years I fought for, that flag right there. And in that, what we said is "one nation, under God, indivisible," indivisible meaning we don't create division. Indivisible with liberty, and that is freedoms, to not be oppressed by other people. I'm gonna tell you what's missing here and what's missing in the schools. God. God is missing. We need to bring Him back right now.
Those are all the speakers that we have tonight. Thank you for being here, and thank you for participating. Our next item is our work session report, and I will say, if there is anyone who wishes to leave, you are certainly free to do so now. Our next item is our work session report. Ms. Crane?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events. Superintendent Dr. Deirdre Pilch and Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and K-8 Leadership, Wes Tuttle, provided a brief update on the opening of the Tuiton Academy of Pre-Engineering. The board discussed community engagement and debriefed the work session to conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. Good evening, board members, and parents, and other guests. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Thank you for sharing your feedback and your comments. I wanna just report that last week was Northridge High School's Homecoming Week. Things went really well there throughout the week, and they won their football game on Friday night. It's their third win in a row. You see our parent in the audience, whose son was playing in that football game, nodding his head, yes. And then on Saturday night, they did their homecoming dance outside there on the campus. So a good week had by all for homecoming. And this week, we start Homecoming Week with Greeley Central High School. And I know many of you are gonna be a part of the Greeley Central High School parade on Friday, and then a part of the football game on Friday night, and probably some of you have children going to the homecoming dance on Saturday night. I also wanna give a huge shout-out to the Greeley Dream Team, and the event last Thursday morning, it was a wonderful event, recognized some outstanding individuals, former Greeley Dream Team students. And you know, one of the things they talked about, that I just think is so important to remind everyone, is that the students who are part of the Greeley Dream Team, we have a 100% on-time graduation rate. It's a huge celebration, and are just so grateful for the work of the Greeley Dream Team here in the district. I also wanted to share that Dr. Dattery and I went down that, later that morning of the Greeley Dream Team breakfast, and we presented to the State Board of Education. We were invited there by staff from the Colorado Department of Ed to come and share our story about the school year last year, and what we did and how we did it. And then to share what we are doing to make up for learning loss or unfinished learning, or whatever term we choose to use, and how we're spending those COVID relief dollars. And then we were asked, what are the supports you need going forward as well? We were really honored to be in front of them. We were one of three school districts who were invited to present, and you know, they were so pleased to hear the stories from the field. There was a rural school district there, a school, a charter school from Denver Public Schools, and then us. It was, you know, a great time for us to really sing the praises of all of our staff, and our parents, and our students, and the hard work that they all did last year to get through that school year, and then going into the summer of summer school, and then preparing for this school year. So that was a lot of fun. And then I wanted to share with you all, just coming up on October 6th, is the Great Ed Colorado Luncheon down at the Denver Botanical Gardens, and I was invited to be one of their speakers at their luncheon. So I will have an opportunity there to talk about really the work we are doing to catch students up, and how we're utilizing our COVID relief dollars, our ESTR dollars, and how those dollars are already making a difference in student achievement here in the district. So more to come on that. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item is the approval of our consent agenda, and this is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We are now to our special items, and the first one of these special items is our Greeley Education Association Greeley Starfish Award. And so I wanna invite Ms. Andy Lee to the podium to present the Starfish Award.
Hello, everyone. I'm glad to see you, and I'm glad to be able to be up here and presenting the Starfish Award to you. As all of you know, last year was a really tough one, and it was really hard to get into classrooms, but we managed. The Starfish Award kind of came from Pat Otto's way of bringing people to you, because we know you can't always come to us. And so what this is, and I don't know if you could flip it up on the screen easily. If you can, that would be great.
I would have to do it from that computer.
So anyway, what the Starfish Award is, for those of you who have joined us tonight, is I'm sure you all know the poem about the little girl with the starfish and the old man. And so the little girl was throwing a starfish into the sea, and everybody kinda looked around and kinda laughed at her and said, "What are you doing?" And she ignored them and kept throwing starfish into the sea. And all the adults were really confused about that, because there were hundreds of thousands of starfish, and there's no way she could save them all. And so one old man finally came up to the little girl and said, "Hey, why, why are you throwing these starfish into the sea? There's no way you could make a difference." And the little girl looks at the starfish and looks at the old man and said, "Well, it makes a difference to this one." And she threw it back into the sea.
I'm sorry, Andy. This is really important that we hear this. If you guys wanna have discussion, can you go ahead and take that outside, please? We're honoring a teacher here, so if you could take that discussion outside, that'd be great.
Well, like I said, you know... Well, like I said, you know, everybody has their own personal beliefs. So anyway, the starfish I want to, the person I want to honor, who has saved starfish for years, is Elizabeth Emmett. Elizabeth is a tech teacher, and so most of us, at least I thought, tech was all about turning the computer on and off, learning how to operate the keyboard, but it's so much more. It's how to verify credible sources. It's how to create a safety within the system of the internet. It's how to use the internet in a way that benefits your learning. And they create designs, they create webpages, and it was amazing being able to go in and watch her. It was a lot of fun. And students, students were thinking, students were actually critically thinking. They were thinking about dress codes. They were trying to find a controversial issue about a dress code. And at first it was like, you know, dress codes alone, that makes it controversial, but it really doesn't. The difference between a fact and a controversy, I learned from a young lady who explained it to me, and this is literally the word she used, miss, a fact is just a fact. Controversy is when somebody puts opinion or belief behind the fact. So I started trying to find a controversial title, and it's harder than I thought. A lot of facts I looked at, I thought were controversial, and they ended up being just facts. So that critical thinking in our schools was really interesting. It wasn't a big deal, it wasn't huge, it wasn't award worthy, but you know what? It was really cool seeing that eighth grade girl explain to me the difference between a fact and a controversy. And that's what Elizabeth provides, that's what all of our teachers provide. They provide the opportunity to think critically, regardless of what the adults believe, the kids are thinking, and that means the kids are learning. And to me, I think that's a pretty great thing. And I apologize for continuing to modify my mask, my, my Polish lips are too big for my tiny little hat. So I, I apologize for that. But anyway, hopefully I'll be able to bring a lot more people in front of you. And I'm really glad that you're able to get into the schools because it's really cool to watch.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And congratulations to Elizabeth Emmett on the Starfish Award. It's a, it is a special recognition to be recognized by, by your own and for the Greeley Education Association to, to notice, and we have fantastic teachers throughout this district, but to stand out among those fantastic teachers is really quite an honor. Our next item is our proclamation recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six adopts the Honorary Proclamation Recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Ms. Pappas, will you read the proclamation for us?
I would be honored to read the proclamation. I'm first going to read it in English and then in Spanish, so be patient. I haven't read Spanish for quite a while, but it is important that. We honor this month. Proclamation recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes and celebrates the significant contributions of Americans tracing their ancestry to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean, and whereas the observance of Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968 through an act of Congress declaring National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was later extended to a month-long celebration, and whereas 60.6 million Americans are of Hispanic and Latino descent, and whereas 14,101 students in Greeley Evans School District Six are of Hispanic and Latino descent, making up 62% of the entire student body, and whereas the contributions of Americans who are of Hispanic and Latino descent in the fields of science, politics, medicine, education, art, music, writing, public service, and many other careers have greatly enhanced and advanced these fields, improving the lives of all Americans, and whereas the art, food, dance, music, and culture of Hispanic and Latino Americans are part of the colorful weave and the fabric of all American culture, and whereas District Six graduates of Hispanic and Latino descent have and will continue to contribute greatly to the cities of Greeley and Evans, enriching our communities and advancing our businesses and economy. Now, therefore, it be, be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six recognizes and celebrates September 15th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all employees, students, families, and community members to honor our citizens of Hispanic and Latino descent and recognize their immense contributions to our communities, our state, our nation, and our world. Proclamación reconociendo las fechas del quince de septiembre al quince de octubre del 2021 como mes nacional de la herencia hispana donde el mes de la herencia hispana reconoce y celebra las contribuciones significantes de americanos que han rastreado su linaje a España, México, Centro y Sudamerica y a las países y habla hispana del Caribe. Y donde el celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana comenzó en 1968 a través de una ley patrocinada por el Congreso declarando la semana nacional de la herencia hispana, la cual luego fue extendida a celebrarse durante un mes completo. Y donde 60.6 millones de americanos son de ascendencia hispana o latina. Y donde 14,101 alumnos en las escuelas del Distrito Seis de Greeley Evans son de ascendencia hispana o latina cubriendo 62% de la población estudiantil. Y donde las contribuciones de americanos de ascendencia hispana o latina en los campos de la ciencia, política, medicina, educación, arte, música, escritura, servicio público, y en muchas otras carreras que grandemente han mejorado y logrado avances en estos campos, mejorando la vida de todos los americanos. Y donde el arte, comida, baile, música y cultura de los americanos hispanos y latinos forman parte de la estructura social de toda la cultura americana. Y donde graduados de ascendencia hispana o latina del Distrito Seis han y siguieron contribuyendo grandemente a las ciudades de Greeley y Evans, enriqueciendo nuestras comunidades y mejorando nuestra industria y economía. Ahora, por lo tanto, se proclama que la mesa directiva de educación del Distrito Escolar Seis de Greeley Evans reconoce y celebra del quince de septiembre del 2021 al quince de octubre del 2021 como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y alienta a todos sus empleados, alumnos, familias y miembros de la comunidad a honrar a nuestras ciudadanos de ascendencia hispana y latina a reconocer sus inmensas contribuciones a nuestras comunidades, a nuestro estado, nuestra nación, y a nuestro mundo. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Great job. Before we open this up for comment and questions from board members, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on this proclamation?
You know, I, I think, you know, we, we recognize that over 60% of our student population is of Hispanic descent, and I think that for us to recognize our Latinx community with this proclamation is certainly extremely important, and especially important in a community with, with the number of Latinx individuals who we have here in our community and in our school district. So thank you, Ms. Pappas, for reading in English and Spanish both.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Solis?
I'm just really proud of our school district. I, I look at all the things that we've accomplished over the time that I've been on the board, and just the relationships that we've, you know, had with different businesses where we've started, you know, work studies, and, you know, our, our people that have contributed to our, our district who have volunteered, a lot of them are Spanish speakers, and to really take the time to acknowledge and recognize them is, is amazing. And so I just want to say thank you to the district as this is my last year, the last time I'll celebrate this with you. I just want to say how proud I am of the population of our school district and the staff that recognizes who our population is and that they work hard every day to make sure that our kids and our families feel included in this district and part of our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Any other comments or questions from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business are revisions to our E-Support Services policies, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the revisions to the E-Support Services policies as presented. Second.
Thank you both. If you're with us, have been with us for any amount of time, you know, this is just routine for us. We're always updating our policies. A lot of this amounts to changing some shows to, or wills to shows and shoulds to must or must to shoulds. And Dr. Pilch, is there anything we need to know about any of these changes?
I trust that you all have reviewed them and that you see the changes are not substantial. They're very much as you described, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Solis?
I just want to thank you for your continued work with your staff to make sure that all of our policies are up to date. We as board members are elected to make policies that oversee the school district, and the fact that some of these have not been looked at for a while and that we're updating them and then making sure that they all are up to par and where they should be legally, I appreciate all that hard work. I know it has been a lot over these last eight years because I've seen these come through, but just those little changes and stuff really make a difference, and so thank you for, and please thank your staff. This, this is a lot of work.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Mr. Haley?
I want to thank everybody for doing a great job of, of working on these, but this might be Ms. Crane's last meeting, working with us. And I want to say thank you very much for your incredible.
It's not the last meeting.
It's not?
No. But it is great that you want to go ahead and thank her.
I do want to thank her because she always takes care, care of us incredibly well, and this is just more evidence of it, and we greatly appreciate all your hard work on all of these policies because they're a little crazy. So thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, I would just echo that appreciation. Again, the batch that we're leaking out tonight doesn't represent substantial changes, but as Ms. Solis noted, some of them, some of them have not been updated for, for 10 years. And we have, we've had a lot of catching up to do, and Ms. Crane has been the person primarily responsible for catching this up. So thank you for all of your work and your work on this especially, so.
She knows she couldn't leave us until, you know, we get caught up on our policies.
That was, that was part of it, Christina.
Okay. My fault.
Well, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business is our update on legislation and ballot measures. Let's see Mr. Fall coming to the podium, but Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say before he gets there?
Thank you, President Matthews. Just a reminder that this, this is the season where we start to look at, at new legislation for this legislative season, and then we start to look at, we start to see ballot measures gaining significant ground here in the state of Colorado. So I've asked Mr. Fall, legal counsel, to share with you how something, remind you how something gets on the ballot, and then to share with you key pieces that we expect to see on the ballot this fall. Thank you, Mr. Fall.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, members of the board, President Matthew, President Matthews. Again, I'm Nathan Fall, I'm legal counsel for the school district. I want to start by echoing everyone's sentiments towards Ms. Crane on her policy work. She is fabulous. We couldn't do what we do without her, so. We're going to do a brief overview of ballot initiatives tonight. There are currently three certified initiatives that are on the ballot for the November election. Then there's also a proposed ballot initiative that's almost certainly going to be certified by November, as well as a quick overview of what's going on with the school finance committee. So what, ballot initiatives, what is a ballot initiative? Well, this is a process that has been established by the Colorado Constitution. I won't read for you what's there in quotes, but that is the words from the Colorado Constitution, permitting, permitting ballot initiatives to be on the ballot. What these do essentially is that they allow citizens to propose new state laws or propose amendments to the Constitution. They have to go through a process to verify it and get it on the ballot, as we'll get into on the next slide. But essentially, if they are successful in certifying their petition, that goes onto the ballot and that becomes a vote for members of the public rather than the General Assembly to create law. So steps one through 13, we're not going to go through this process, but this is essentially how you get a ballot initiative on our ballots for the November election, much like what happens with our board elections. If you look to number 11, there's a verification of signatures and a caring of insufficiencies, much like Ms. Crane does for our board of elections. She reviews all the petitions and signatures, makes sure they're valid, and then submits them to the Secretary of State. So what is typically included in a ballot initiative generally, you know, there can be pretty much anything could be on a ballot initiative. However, since the mid 90s, we've limited ballot initiatives to only a single subject. But for our purposes, really, we're focused on TABR. We know that that's a Colorado Taxpayer Initiative Bill of Rights, and those are any increases or decreases to our tax rates for sales, property, auto tax, anything you name it. The citizens vote on rather than that going to the General Assembly. Colorado is unique that we have TABR. Most states don't allow the citizens to vote on taxes. Just one fun fact, I'll tell you about ballot initiatives as an example. In the very first election in 1912, when they had ballot initiatives, voters were asked to enact statewide prohibition on the manufacturing and sale of alcoholic beverages. The voters refused, 60% to 40%. Of course, the federal government introduced prohibition later, and then Colorado voted once again repealed it in 1932 before the federal government did. So we can see some history there when it comes to ballot initiatives. So getting into our first certified ballot initiative, this is really the main one that's going to be impacting District Six to some degree. We have Proposition 119, the Learning, Enrichment, and Academic Progress Program, also known as the LEAP program. What the LEAP program intends to do is it'll have incremental increases and raise sales tax rate on recreational marijuana sales from 15% to 20% over the next four years. Right now, it's at 15%. And what that excess revenue will do is it'll create the Colorado Learning, Enrichment, and Academic Progress Program. Estimates have shown that it'll raise approximately $150 million statewide to provide additional supplementary services to Colorado students. They were calling these out-of-school enrichment opportunities. What are out-of-school enrichment opportunities? I'll just read that for you. Any program, service, system, activity, materials, or purchase that provides additional educational or developmental support to youth outside of the regular school day. Some examples include tutoring, targeted assistance for youth of special needs, second language training, additional academic learning support materials, career and technical educational training programs, social and emotional support learning, you name it, it's probably on there. This LEAP program applies to all Colorado children ages five through 17 or eligible. However, priority is given for youth and families with incomes at or below the federal poverty level. Right now, that's $26,600 for a family with four. Once that priority group has been exhausted, it goes to the second tier, which is youth and families with incomes up to twice the federal poverty level. So just doing a little math with you, that is $53,200, and any child whose family falls into that category would be given priority. After both of those priority groups have been exhausted, the remaining revenue and aid will be provided to all other participating students in Colorado. This was made with an eye toward equity, toward ensuring that students with the most needs have the most access to these out-of-school enrichment opportunities. This is a really great program. However, one thing I want to mention is that a lot of this money is going to go to private organizations, private groups, private companies that are going to be providing these services to our children. So you can see that $150 million is quite to be providing these services to our children. So, you can see that $150 million is quite a bit of money. School districts could really just use that money generally, and so we could really be taking this money and providing it to support our own students in our own ways. So, you can kind of see the balance in how these, how this law might interact with taking money away from District Six.
So, I have a question on that. So, was this initially Initiative 25?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
And then have any of the state organizations, education organizations taken a stance on this, like CASB or CEA or?
I haven't looked at that. Do you know?
I believe that CASB and CASE have both opposed this ballot measure, and and but but there are organizations that do support them. It was a conversation at the Denver Area Superintendent's Meeting last week that I attended. So, some of us are actually seeking a meeting with Michael Johnston to sit down, and he's, he really has been promoting this, sit down with him and and learn more about, you know, what his thinking is behind it and and what it might mean for school districts. Think one of the the issues is that dollars can be reallocated from the the land use dollars that school districts currently get. Those dollars can be reallocated to this program as well. So, it could possibly take money away from public school.
So, is now time to ask a question about that or no?
Sure. I might not know the answer, but feel free to ask.
So, I've I've done some background checking on this, and I do have some concerns. I feel as though there are probably some communities that have some really strong nonprofit equity groups, organizations, example, the metro area, where there's other communities that don't. My concern is outside agencies trying to come into our community, not knowing our community, and getting a hold of that money and taking advantage of families and people and not know anything about our community. So, this has been a really tough one for me. I've had people on both sides reach out to me, wanting me to sponsor this or put my name to it. But for me here locally, I really do have some concern of outside people trying to come in and profit and take advantage of this money. And so, I wasn't really sure if we had a list of local organizations or that would even qualify for this or.
We don't know yet which organizations would would qualify, Ms. Solis. So, that's one of the things we want to talk with the author a little bit about it because we don't know. I think, you know, on the surface, it sounds really good, like more money, you know, tax marijuana at a higher level, bring in more revenue, and and get tutoring services to kids. It sounds, I mean, that sounds pretty reasonable on the surface. I think your concern is is a legitimate concern that, I mean, I can just tell you with all the ESTR funding, Ms. Sponsor and I get easily 100 emails a day from vendors trying to get a hold of that, those ESTR funds. I mean, literally, I bet 100 a day, literally. And so, there will be interest in this revenue for private use. There's no question about that. And so, what I think some of the superintendents are trying to understand is how will someone qualify and as a provider, and then how do we help to ensure that those are the right interventions for our students in our community?
Well, and I know for District Six, a lot of the grants that we receive, you know, there's a list of things that you have to go through to prove what you did with that.
Right.
And so, although it's a lot of hoops to jump through, I think that accountability piece is really important, and I'm not quite sure what this accountability piece would look like here when you have so many different people coming in and doing this work, and it looks differently. There's the list of what could qualify is long. So, how you really measure the benefit is is a little concerning to me when it comes to accountability.
Yeah, I think we're going to want to watch it closely, and then, you know, everybody will have their time at the ballot.
And you can give us a refresher after you have that meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Solis. I think you raised all the right concerns that we're all having. So, we'll definitely monitor and keep you updated as it's progressing. Next, we have Proposition 120, reduce property tax rates in between $25 million and Tabor surplus revenue. This is quite confusing. I will do my best to briefly explain this, but I apologize for any confusion I might cause. And the reason that I say that is this last General Assembly, in response to this Proposition 120, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill 21-293, property tax classification and assessment rates. So, what SB 21-293 did is it reclassified certain residential property and non-residential property into different subclasses, and they did that for the purposes of assessment for valuation. So, we have non-residential property. They created three new subclasses. They created agriculture. They created renewable energy property, and they created lodging property. And then on the residential side, they created multifamily residential property. So, under Senate Bill 21-293, they temporarily reduced the property tax rate for agriculture and renewable energy from 29% to 26.4% for the next two years. For all residential property, they temporarily reduced that to 7.15% to 6.15%, again, temporarily for two years. However, Senate Bill 21-293, they created a little restructuring provision in the law that restructures the law so that if this initiative, 120, is passed, then it would only apply to lodging property and multifamily property. So, they kind of included a provision and a clause in there because what Proposition 120 does is it asks voters to reduce the residential property tax rate from 7.15% to 6.15% permanently, and then for commercial, i.e. non-residential property, it asks to reduce property tax rate from 29% to 26.4% permanently. However, because of Senate Bill 21-293, if this initiative is passed, it would only apply to multifamily residential property and would only apply to lodging property. I know that's a little confusing, but I hope that kind of makes sense to you all. But regardless, some estimates have come out that this would reduce the state budget by approximately $1 billion if all property tax rates were reduced to this amount. What does this do for school funding? Well, obviously, it's going to vary district by district. We know that districts are funded through local property taxes, the local share, and then they're also funded through the state share. We know that the last School Finance Act cut the budget stabilization factor in half, and so we know that if the local share goes down, then the state share goes up, which likely means that the budget stabilization factor is going to continue to rise. So, ultimately, it's likely that school funding will reduce in most districts unless that offset by the state brings us back to to normal. Finally, Amendment 78. I'm not going to spend too much time here. This is talking about custodial funds. Right now, custodial funds are appropriated through the state treasurer. Custodial funds, in case you're wondering, those are state revenue not generated through taxes. Typically, we find this in the way of monetary damages. If the state is successful in trial, that revenue becomes what's known as custodial funds. So, what Amendment 78 would do is it would create the custodial fund transparency account, which would then give that power to the General Assembly to control that money and use it on an equitable basis for the benefit of the state. Who knows how much that'll really impact school districts statewide? Last is this proposed ballot initiative, 31, initiates statute to reduce the state income tax rate for all taxpayers. If you can recall, this is almost word-for-word exactly the same thing as Proposition 116 that was passed last year. What Prop. 116 did is it cut income and corporate tax rates from 4.63% to 4.55%, which is what we're at right now. What this initiative does is it cuts it even further from 4.55% to 4.41%. We know that the estimated impacts for last cut was about $154 million annually. Initiative 31 is a higher tax cut. Before, it was a 0.08% tax cut. This is a 0.14% tax cut. So, that's almost double. So, this will likely lead to an overall higher impact to the budget than it was before. You know, the proponents of this bill, right now, given COVID, it's been really unpredictable. A lot of families have fallen on hard times. Even any moderate savings will certainly assist any Colorado citizen. It's really important that we're focused on that right now. But of course, on the other side, any tax cuts of this magnitude would certainly have a sizable impact on all government services, which would certainly include education. We can assume that this tax cut would likely be about $250 million annually, which would certainly come out of the education budget. And like I said, this has been a proof of circulation. It has yet to be certified, but I can almost guarantee that it'll be on the November ballot. Finally, the School Finance Act.
So, I'm sorry, can we go back to that real quick?
Yes.
So, when you're talking about entities that are impacted by that, I mean, you're talking about education, fire, police, parks, and wrecks, all of those things are encompassed in that, correct?
Yeah, anything the state budget pays for would be impacted.
All right, thank you.
And then finally, we have the School Finance Act. I'm really focused on that bottom line, House Bill 211325. We know that they reestablished the Legislative Interim Committee on School Finance. These two bullet points here are really the main focus of the School Finance Committee at this time. Right now, they're really looking about how to modernize the formula to make it more transparent, equitable, and student-centered. I don't know if any of you have taken a look at the School Finance Formula. It is extremely confusing. It is hard to follow. It is not transparent. So, that was something that they are working on adjusting. They're also looking at the current method for identifying at-risk pupils and whether or not this is appropriate. They may consider consulting outside firms about creating a better at-risk formula. We know that they updated it already for Colorado to include reduced lunch students, as well as that ELL, that English Language Learners' Provision, provides additional funding for those students who are most in need. So, they are still working on the School Finance Formula and how it can best fit all of our Colorado students. So, with that, does anybody have any questions or additional comments?
It's a lot.
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Fall. So, thank you for the explanation, and we are we are all watching these pretty closely, and thank you, though, for making those that are that are not as clear, much clearer for us. So, we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Well, that is all the business that we have tonight. So, thank you for those of you who came to participate in the meeting. Thank you to those who've been watching online. We appreciate your support as well. This meeting is now adjourned.